All right, good morning. I'm gonna call our Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Could please stand for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, roll call Beth.
Sure. Commissioner Schlangen?
Here.
Commissioner Heinand?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Here.
Commissioner Pop?
Here.
All right, Monty, anything on the agenda?
No changes.
Right.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion second to approve our agendas presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. County board meetings are broadcasted live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. County board observes Robert's Rules of Order for its meetings, so please obtain the board chair's consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn off all your cell phones or turn them to private. Thank you. Open forum. Don't believe there's anyone here. I don't think there's anyone online with us either. And we'll give Monty a minute to fire up the go-to meeting.
Well, at least we're recording.
I thought we were ahead of the game.
Yeah, as he was sitting there tapping his foot.
Yeah. You might have to get, you might have to get here a little earlier.
You realize we're not gonna let you live this one down.
You know, that's the first time this has ever happened.
First time.
That ever got to start go-to. Yeah, give me a second, cuz when Roxanne has been using it for I do, I've gotta, I've gotta sign out a couple different times. We're not there yet.
Well, just keep telling us what you have to do, I guess, Monty.
Yeah. It's, 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 uh...
I was kidding.
It wants to hold on to the last user and not, not, uh, not sign out, so I gotta sign out twice. There we go. Almost there. Almost there. Okay. All right. Okay.
Maybe give it just a, oh, I see Roxanne is on there.
There she is.
Just wanted to make sure nobody else is waiting.
There we go.
All right, give it a few more seconds to make sure we don't have anybody trying to get in. All right, nothing on the open forum, or we're gonna move on to consent agenda. Items one through six.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
I'd like to pull number six. I need one, a little explanation on how we determine that solid waste fee per unit.
Okay.
Is that okay with you?
I'll move approval. Go ahead.
I'd like to hold number one.
Okay.
I will move approval of items two, three, four, and five.
So Roxanne, can you come join us?
All right, thank you. We have a motion for a consent agenda, items two, three, four, and five. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Item one, Commissioner Schlangen.
On page three was on, let's see, next to the bottom, where it says, next engineer, Kreisberg on the second line, was the consultant, Win, Win, Woodseth or Windseth?
Woodseth.
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 Okay, so that means a spelling change.
S-C-T-H. So that is W-I-D.
W-I-D.
S-E-T-H.
That's all.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Pop, item six.
So on our, on our values, on our units, it's ten dollars per unit, right, Roxanne?
Yes.
So is, is that set by the county or is that set by the state?
That's set by the county.
By the county.
And it has been for many years.
I thought it was ten dollars per parcel, and that was it. I didn't know it was ten dollars per unit.
Oh, it's been, it's been that way. Yeah.
Been that way. Is there?
Yeah, and, and that's because you'll have apartment buildings that are producing a lot more traffic, or excuse me, traffic. Garbage, garbage than, you know, an individual house.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, well, I just, you know, when you look at, at some of them where there's, you know, seventy-five units, over six hundred bucks, is that something we can look at? I mean, we have a huge surplus in our, in our solid waste.
We can. Um, I know there, there is concern that if you go backwards, it's hard to go forwards again, forward again if you need to collect funds.
I just.
I think, is it not?
It's been going too. It's been this way for a long time, but I was under the impression that was ten dollars flat fee per, you know, per parcel.
Hmm.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's fine. All right.
So we need to take care of items one and six, or?
I, I move for approval of item number six.
Okay. I'll second that. All those in favor of six?
Aye.
Posed, carried. We'll need a motion on item one.
Um, I'm, I'm that we change the Windseth to Woodseth and pass and pass the...
Okay, I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Okay, we're through with our consent agenda. Uh, considering agreement with Great River Greening for stump removal and prairie restoration at the Benton River Park.
Jeff has the item.
Okay.
Jeff has the item.
Morning, Jeff.
Good morning. Um, so yeah, I'm here today to propose the agreement between Benton County and, uh, Great River Greening. Great River Greening's a nonprofit organization, which is, uh, able to offer us a hundred and six thousand dollars in grant money out of the, um, outdoors heritage, uh, funds, um, through the state. And in return, we would contribute ten percent, so max would be, uh, ten thousand, six hundred dollars for the cleanup of, uh, the area that we did, the forest management there, um, in, uh, Benton River, which would be roughly the thirty-acre parcel on the north end, not the whole area that we thinned out and everything. Just be the three winros and, uh, the, and other invasion species that are still growing in that area. There's a bunch of Siberian elm and some buckthorn and stuff, and they're gonna, they come in there and help us manage that. Um, kinda go over the best ways to do that. Um, it'd be a matter of rushing everything out of there, grubbing or grinding down the stumps, and, um, then burning it off potentially this winter, and then, uh, reseeding next spring, and, uh, hopefully we'd have, uh, some really nice native grasses coming back in there next summer. This, this proposal, this grant would be, or the agreement would be for up to June of twenty-six. It can extend to. But, um, it's kinda outlined down here in the back, uh, you know, what we'd be looking at for time-wise. Starting now or as soon as we get it signed, it'd be, uh, coming up with an RFP, getting a grant proposal out, getting a contractor signed up on it, um, this winter, um, removing the, the invasion species out there, allowing it to clean up and the burning and slashings, um, and then establishing growth in the seeding.
Great. Sounds like a good project. Monty, we, we get some proceeds, uh, from the sales. We'll use those dollars.
That's where it's coming from. Jeff, what was, what was the total? I'm sorry, maybe just, what was the net? After we paid Bob?
The net after we paid everything was forty-two thousand, six hundred, really close to that.
Well, we've got the funds there to pay the ten cents.
Yes, we do. You bet, yeah.
So, Mr. Chair.
So Jeff, they will hire, or this, what is it, Green?
Great River Greening.
Great River Greening will hire the contractor, or do they have their own contractors?
The way the grant works is they have the, the grant money. It's, it's, it's through them, so they can't give it to us. They have to pay the contractor directly. So they'll be working with us to come up with a RFP, you know, what we want done out there, and making sure it follows their guidelines of what they can give grant money to. I've talked to, um, Wiley Buck extensively. He's the, the guy that, their contact person, and it sounds, it sounds like their mission is, aligns perfectly with what we're looking at doing out there, so.
Yeah.
I don't see any problems with any, um, Wiley did, was the one that came to the, uh, park. Yep, and kinda went through that all, but, um, I think it's a great opportunity.
Oh, yeah.
We get some funds, we get a lot of stuff worked on, and, uh, we kinda get everything back in track over there to where, hopefully, we can, once we get this all squared away, it'll be easier to maintain and, and keep it.
My second question, and on the south end, they're just gonna let them rot and decay in there, right?
Correct. Yep. It's there inside the woods area.
That's the area we toured, right? That we did a walk on, walk-through?
Yeah, yep.
Commissioner Schlangen, do you have something?
Uh, yes. Uh, and then in twenty-six, we're gonna do a second control burn?
Um, yes, it would be, um, it would be, they, they recommend a control burn every three years or so to just, uh, get rid of the old vegetation, you know, um, to get anything that would be, seedlings and stuff that would come up and try taking over that area from the, uh, the red pine nuts in there and stuff. So every two, three years, go in there and burn that off and get new seed in. It, uh, it just keeps it looking the way it should and, and keeps everything from kinda collapsing in.
So Jeff, so, I mean, that's three years away, but at that point in time, we probably have to hire somebody to do that control burn, right?
Correct, and, and, uh, the hope is that this Great River Greening, um, I've talked to him about it, you know, this could be like, uh, phase one of, of an agreement with them, you know, that they offer more grant money. We can definitely go back to this. Um, this grant, I've, I've looked into it a little bit, and it's funded by the, um, Minnesota's state.
Legacy?
Yeah, the Clear Water and Land Act, so they receive thirty-three percent of the tax revenue off that, so. Something that should be around for a long time, hopefully, so.
And they got a lot of money.
Yeah. Did you have anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Monty, uh, in regards to the roughly thirty thousand dollars that's left, is, will that be restricted funds in for parks, or what happens to those dollars?
We parked it in the park CAP, so it just sits there until we can use it for something in parks.
Maybe, maybe burning or whatever.
Right, exactly.
Okay, okay. Any other questions for Jeff?
No. I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with the Great River Green for natural air restoration at Benton River Park.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve that contract. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff, for everything you do there.
Well, Chris, you're up and you're into your eighteen-minute spiel.
Eighteen minutes, alright.
For Human Services starts at nine-thirty.
All right, soon to be seventeen.
Good morning.
Well, um, on the agenda is to discuss our twenty-twenty-two annual report. Hopefully, all the commissioners received a hard copy, so, if you have trouble sleeping at night, I recommend opening that up.
What page?
Start at the beginning, um, and fall asleep pretty quickly. So we won't go through it in, in its entirety, but there are some pages I do wanna, uh, just take a minute or two to point out. Um, and I brought it up on the screen for those playing along at home can follow too. We'll just start off with, uh, right here in the beginning. I always like to try to provide some comments. Um, and, and the next page as well, just kinda summarize how the year went. You know, it, maybe it doesn't mean much now, but I do look back at old annual reports, and it's, it's amazing to me, even my predecessors, you know, going back sixty years, reading their annual reports and reading, um, engineers' comments. And there's a lot of common themes. In public works, there's never enough funds to do what, uh, the public demands. There's never enough staff to do all the work that's required. That's a common theme for, as long as there's been a county highway department, you'll see some of the same things repeated, and I repeat some of these things here. As I think ahead to twenty-twenty-three, I think I'll mention, um, well, I'd be remiss if I don't mention, uh, my departure for those short months, but also things like the winter that we had, eh, you know, the beginning of twenty-twenty-three, how much snowfall we had, and how that was near-record breaking, you know, one of the top three snowfall events, and how that impacted our budget. If you read through here, I, another common theme that I mentioned is inflation, how that was hitting hard, uh, with the maintenance budget, and how it's hard to, to account for those when we're budgeting a year ahead and, and monthly, things are changing. Moving on to the next page, these next couple pages are pages that are new, uh, that me and the accountant, Missy, decided to put in this year. Since wheelage and, uh, sales tax is a significant source of revenue for our projects, we thought it would be beneficial to put, uh, a couple pages in there kinda highlighting those. So once again, think about, this is the end, a snapshot of the end of two thousand and twenty-two, um, what our funds look like. So this page, roman numeral four at the bottom, is our wheelage tax for the year twenty-two. So we, we do receive, uh, a payment every month of wheelage tax. That's what it looks like over the course of the year for a total revenue of six hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventeen cents of wheelage tax. The next page is our sales tax, um, and that's what it looks like. You know, each month, we receive a payment from the state. In two thousand and twenty-two, we received three million, eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-six cents. Now, as you commissioners may recall, we are parking those funds into Fund Thirty, uh, Local Road Projects Fund. But for us as a highway department, when we look at our five-year plan and when we start budgeting for construction projects, it's important for us to separate wheelage tax and sales tax, cuz as you all know, sales tax can only be used on those projects that are listed in that resolution. But if we back up a page, we do have another significant source of revenue, wheelage tax, to do other road projects. So that's why it's important to us to keep those kinda separated, and we thought it maybe would be beneficial, uh, to this commissioner to see, to look back over the course of a year of what we received. Another page we added new, it's kinda given a snapshot of where we are in that list. So that resolution list is what I just referenced, is those same projects shown on this page. So as of the end of two thousand and twenty-two, this is what it looked like. You know, some of the sales tax projects were completed. Uh, some of them we knew in two thousand and twenty-two were already programmed for future years, um, and so on and so forth. So at the end of two thousand and twenty-two, out of almost thirty-five million dollars worth of projects, we have funded or completed just under five million. So that kinda gives you at the end of twenty-two where we were in the process or progress, I should say, of sales tax collection and construction. All right, we'll move ahead here. The next page I'd like to point out, uh, is actually page one. This is a traditional page. It's been in annual reports for as long as they've been creating them. And once again, it's just a quick summary of our costs for the, uh, for the year. It summarizes our CASA, um, mileage, and that's broken out in our regular and our municipal mileage. And as you may recall, municipal mileage is our CASA roads in the cities that are under five thousand population. So that would be, uh, our county state aid highways in Foley, Gilman, and Rice. And I do wanna draw your attention to this number right here, this two million, sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and seven cents. So that is the maintenance that we spent on CASA roads in two thousand and twenty-two. And why I wanna call that out is, we'll see in a later page, but I know that our state aid allotment for two thousand and twenty-two for CASA maintenance was only one million, eight hundred and seven thousand dollars. So there is a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar difference there, where we had more maintenance costs on CASA roads than revenue we received from the state. What does that mean? Well, that just means that Levy, unfortunately, this year had to supplement, uh, some of our CASA maintenance in two thousand and twenty-two. And as the county highway engineer, I try to dig in a little bit deeper and figure out why was that? Well, was it more snowfall? Was it more snow plowing? Was it just more routine maintenance, pothole patching? And maybe the most significant thing that jumped out at us in two thousand and twenty-two is that we had a lot of striping, maintenance striping that we completed, and this was actually a carryover from two thousand and twenty-one. It was roads like, uh, CASA thirty-three, Benton Drive, and Sartell. That four lanes went a whole year with essentially no striping that we finally got completed in twenty-two, and that kinda pushed us over, that was about a hundred thousand dollars worth of striping right there. So that was half of that overrun, you could say, um, uh, where we had to supplement with, basically had to supplement with Levy cuz we, cuz we used more than what our state aid allotment was. So just a couple of things you could pull from this sheet, you know, um, once again, when you add these two up, we're sitting almost fifty-fifty CASA miles to county road miles. That's what we spent on county road maintenance in two thousand and twenty-two with one point four million dollars. And then there's a summary of construction costs.
Chris, could I interrupt you quick?
Yes, certainly.
So maintenance costs on county roads, so do you figure in the cost of additional gra, class five on, on gravel roads?
Yep.
So you came up with an amount, even though you're taking it from the county pit?
Yes.
You bill that out?
Yeah, because we still have crushing costs. We still have the cost to, to truck that to the road, our labor costs a, and all that, yeah. So gravel tax, even though we own the pit, we're still paying gravel tax, uh, so those costs all get captured and, and wrapped into this, this number here.
Thank you.
Very good question. All right, the next few pages just kinda specifically list out the active, uh, project numbers. And every construction project, um, has its unique project number, so you can see what we spent, um, year to year on those projects. And maybe this is more beneficial to us accountants and engineers, uh, cuz we know a project is not completed all in one calendar year. There's a lot of planning. Even the construction carries over to different county years, or calendar years. Even if the physical work is completed, a lot of times there's paperwork, and final payments don't happen until the, the following calendar year. So that's what these next, uh, couple pages highlight, and, and SAP, uh, usually denotes a state, well, it does denote a state aid project, whereas a project number that starts with CP is a county project, and that really signifies the funding source of it.
That was one of my questions. So on your first page there, you've got a number of SAPs, but then like the last two are SPs. Is that a typo or does it just mean state project?
No, good, good eye. What that means is state project, a lot of times, those have a little bit of federal money in them, and that's what we know these two projects. I know SP zero-zero-five-six-oh-four-dash-oh-two-seven and SP zero-zero-five-six-oh-eight-zero-zero-nine, both had some federal money in those. That CASA four was that reclaimed project east of Foley, um, and six-oh-eight was a leftover, uh, reclaim east of Saint Cloud. So that was the final, um, just some final paperwork we completed in twenty-two, even though that project was physically completed in twenty-one. So good eye. SAP usually means it's a state-funded, usually from our CASA allotment. SP usually means there's a, the grant or federal money is, is tied to that. All right, we talk about equipment that we purchased, uh, and scrapped or sold throughout the year in those dollar amounts. We, we mentioned our assets, um, our fund balances, any revenues that hasn't been received, that are still received or need to be received in the following calendar year, um, and any liabilities that we still have, like invoices. We got invoiced at the end of the year but hadn't paid out. Uh, those kinds of things are shown in the next few pages. Just a summary of our, our bal, uh, billings. Yeah, and this is the page where, actually, the next page I wanna point out, um, here we go. This is where I got our, um, state aid regular maintenance, where we got the one point eight million, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So I'm at page four point two at the bottom. So that kinda shows our revenue, um, of the year two thousand and twenty-two, and that's where I, I know that we overspent, uh, CASA maintenance. And when I say overspent, I don't necessarily mean it's a bad thing. Obviously, it was state aid maintenance that needed to be completed. But the reality of it was, we didn't receive all that in revenue from our state aid allotment. Um, another thing you can kinda pull away from this is too, is that state aid may not be keeping up with the maintenance that's required on our CASA routes. And there's various reasons for that. Our CASA routes tend to be our higher-volume routes. We have more multi-lane roads at our CASAs. When you think of Benton Drive through Sock Rapids and Sartell being four lanes, five lanes with a center-turn lane, CASA three through Sock Rapids is now multi-lanes. So those roads do, just per mile, do require more maintenance, uh, than some of our other county roads. So there's a lot of information in this report. If you wanna know what we dispersed for township roads, since the town road allotment comes to the counties first, you can see what each township received in two thousand and twenty-two. What's interesting for me is sometimes I like to go back and see year to year, how much has that fund been increasing, um...
And Chris, are these based off of the township certification each year for the number of miles?
That's correct, yeah. So we, each fall, uh, in October, we'll send them the letter asking them to certify their mileage each year. And then our, each county has the ability to set their own distribution formula, and ours is based, basically fifty percent based on their mileage and fifty percent based on their population. So if you look at this, you see Watteb see, receives the biggest chunk, and that's really due to their population. They have the most, the highest population out of any of the townships in our county.
And again, they're certifying that they're actually maintaining these roads.
Yeah, there is some statute language. It says, "They maintain those as an open and public road for at least, is it either eight or nine months out of the year."
Okay.
So every once in a while, when staffing and we have time to allow for that, we would like to go out and check and just verify it. Maybe it's, we don't check every township road. Maybe we check a few to make sure the mileage is correct. But to be perfectly honest, we haven't done that for a number of years, just because usually it comes in and we don't have the time to go out there and, and check that. So we really are relying on the township certifying, uh, and taking it on faith that they're being accurate and truthful in their, in their mileage.
That's true. And it makes no difference, Chris, right? It's based on a mile, whether it's asphalt or, or gravel, right?
Correct, yep. We don't differentiate. We do track whether it is, uh, gravel or a batuminous surface, but it doesn't affect the dollar amount that they receive.
And then when is it distributed to them? When do they receive it?
So we receive it from the state in February, and we actually have a statutory obligation to release it to the townships by March first of every year.
Okay.
So we, we don't hold on to it and try to earn any money off of it. We just flip it right around.
Do we do it all in one check or do they do it in two?
No, we're, we're distributing to them all in one, so, um, cuz we get it all at once. It doesn't, for me, honestly, it's easier counting and something I could see being forgotten if we try to do it in two. So we just pay it all out in the March of, March of every year, so. All right, I mean, there's all kinds of things in here, liabilities of, uh, you know, everybody that we paid, made payments to, um, over the course of the year. That's what you see in these next pages. And then I kinda wanna get to these pages here. So... When you think of Benton Drive through Sock Rapids and Sartell being four lanes, five lanes with a center turn lane. Cassau three through Sock Rapids is now multi-lanes. So those roads do, just per mile, do require more maintenance than some of our other county roads. So there's a lot of information in this report. If you want to know what we dispersed for township roads, since the town road allotment comes to the counties first, you can see what each township received in two thousand and twenty-two. What's interesting for me is sometimes I like to go back and see year to year, how much has that fund been increasing?
And Chris, are these based off of the township certification each year for the number of miles?
That's correct, yeah. So we each fall, in October, will send them the letter asking them to certify their mileage each year. And then our, each county has the ability to set their own distribution formula. And ours is based basically fifty percent based on their mileage and fifty percent based on their population. So if you look at this, you see Watteb receives the biggest chunk, and that's really due to their population. They have the most, the highest population out of any of the townships in our county.
And again, they're certifying that they're actually maintaining these roads.
Yeah, there is some statute language. It says they maintain those as an open and public road for at least, is it either eight or nine months out of the year?
Okay.
So every once in a while, when staffing and we have time to allow for that, we would like to go out and check and just verify it. Maybe it's we don't check every township road. Maybe we check a few to make sure the mileage is correct. But to be perfectly honest, we haven't done that for a number of years just because usually it comes in and we don't have the time to go out there and check that. So we really are relying on the township certifying and taking it on faith that they're being accurate and truthful in their in their mileage.
Mr. Chair, and it makes no difference, Chris, right? It's based on a mile, whether it's asphalt or gravel, right?
Correct, yep. We don't differentiate. We do track whether it is gravel or batuminous surface, but it doesn't affect the dollar amount that they receive.
And then when is it distributed to them? When do they receive it?
So we receive it from the state in February, and we actually have a statutory obligation to release it to the townships by March first of every year.
Okay.
So we we don't hold on to it and try to earn any money off of it. We flip it right around.
Do we do it all in one check or do they do it in two?
No, we're distributing to them all in one. So because we get it all at once. It doesn't, for me, honestly, it's easier counting and something I could see being forgotten if we try to do it in two. So we just pay it all out in the March of, March of every year, so. All right, I mean, there's all kinds of things in here, liabilities of, you know, everybody that we paid, made payments to over the course of the year. That's what you see in these next pages. And then I kind of want to get to these pages here. So these don't have a page number, but they start to look sideways here. And here's where we start to get into all of our equipment. So if you ever want to know what our fleet looks like, you can certainly see that here. Do I need to have a free trial to rotate pages?
I'd have to download it first.
Well.
There we go.
I don't know why this is, but okay, we'll just go back. We'll just, I'll just point out a couple of things. So once again, it's kind of interesting to see over the life of a piece of equipment. Recently, in a budget discussion, we mentioned next pieces of equipment that may need to be replaced. And I mentioned plow trucks. But I'll just point out the two oldest ones that we're still waiting to replace after two thousand and twenty-four or in two thousand and twenty-four, these two thousand and three Volvos. That's the year that they were, well, they were actually purchased in two thousand and two. You can see that acquired date is August ninth, two thousand and two. And what we paid for them, right there, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-four. So right now, we're over three hundred thousand to replace that, you know, twenty-one years later, twenty-two years later. That's that's the price increase over a couple of decades for a piece of equipment. So those kind of things are what I geek out about and like looking at old reports and say, you know, oh, boy, equipment used to be pretty cheap. Although you look about, look at some of the plumbing equipment they use in the sixties and seventies, and maybe you'd be appreciative of what we have today.
Chris, what's the equipment rental column about?
Okay. So that that factors into our state aid maintenance allotment. So we figure out kind of a rental cost to own and maintain that piece of equipment. And then when it's being used, say a plow truck, when it's plowing snow on a state aid route, that dollar amount is used in the formula, in the big statewide formula on dispersing Cassau maintenance funds to all the eighty-seven counties.
Okay.
So it gets, it gets, that's that's an oversimplification of it, but the depreciation value factors into that and things like that. So there's an argument to be made. If we were, just in a general accounting, we should be following our depreciation schedule in our fiscal policies. But if we're keeping equipment longer than than its depreciation schedule, meaning it's depreciated years ago, we're not gaining any reimbursement from the, or gain, we're not gaining any more reimbursement from the state for using that on our Cassau roads, if that makes sense. And once again, I'm probably not doing justice, and my accountant may be cringing just listening to me, but.
So is there a bottom line? Like it never gets any lower than a certain dollar amount?
Basically, when it depreciates to zero. So when we purchase a new piece of equipment, we look at our fiscal policies and we have some guidelines in our fiscal policies on depreciation. That's the schedule that we use. We just take that total value divided by that many years, and that's how much it depreciates each year, pretty simple. So once it gets to zero, yeah, we've we've earned the maximum amount of rental rate we could on that piece of equipment from state aid.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, that doesn't mean that the equipment's worth zero at that point.
Right, yeah, I knew that, but but we're not getting any money.
Yep, we're not, yeah.
For for what we got.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Chris, what, how many years are you using for depreciation? Seven?
Eight.
Eight? Yeah, that's what these are used right now, so.
Is what?
Well, so, yeah, if you look at some of these older ones.
Thank you.
When they were purchased, it was eight years. But some of these more recent ones, I think our policy now reflects that that should be more of a fifteen-year, when in reality, we're keeping them twenty years plus.
Man, realistically, we're not going to get any more money, but we're going to spread it out over the life of the equipment, maybe a little bit more.
Yeah.
You can't get any more than what you're going to depreciate it out for.
Yeah, exactly right. Just a lot of numbers in here, but I do want to go down to one more section, another sideways section. But we we do break out each each road. Here we go. By segment. So and we break it out to different maintenance categories. And so this page here starts on page fourteen. These are Cassau roads, one through numbered one through thirty-three, and broken out to smoothing the surface, minor surface repair, cleaning culverts and ditches, brush and weed control, snow and ice removal, traffic signs. And so all of our time sheet codes, when when maintenance people work on our roads, we have specific codes. We ask them to code their time too, and that's how we kind of track these these costs. But maybe the big thing to keep, take away from this, this column, to the right is our cost per mile subtotal. So out of all of our two hundred and nine miles of Cassau regular, we spend a little over five thousand dollars per mile maintaining them.
What happened with Cassau twenty-four there that it's three times?
Because it's such a short segment. So Cassau twenty-four is just a hair over a quarter mile long there in Royalton, from Highway ten up to the Morrison County line. So it it's just, it's just a factor of it's such a short mileage that when you divide it by that, it just looks kind of inflated, so.
Shouldn't it be cheaper with the sand up there?
That's what they keep saying.
Yeah.
So a good eye, though, but yeah, that's why it's better to look at. You can look at specific mileage and point out things like, why is it so high? But but just, I know it, this is a short section, so you send anybody over there, kind of like mobilization. You have the same mobilization if it's a quarter mile to a mile long, just more like, so it just makes it look like it's more.
Commissioner. On 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 some of that, so I'm assuming that when they're on county forty, they run up there and get that little stretch when they're doing some, like snow plowing and that. Couldn't we have an agreement with the city to do that? I mean, they do up to, you know, the county line ends right there before the high school.
Yeah.
And so if we had an agreement with the city, we wouldn't have to at least run up there to do snow plowing and stuff like that.
Yeah, and I think actually it's Morrison County because that intersects with Morrison County Road there, just north of the, or at the high school, I believe. So I think sometimes they'll they'll come down and they'll use that, they'll plow one direction and they'll come down and they'll hit Highway ten and then go back up to the signal and take a right again. And sometimes they're plowing that that for us.
Or else, you know, the township, Langola Township is up there for that. They got two slight developments up there. Let's work with the township and tell them, would you please plow that for us? I mean, they could do it a lot cheaper and we can do it by not having any downtime. They got, I believe they got two roads in there that lead back. There's, you know, a dozen houses or so. And they're right there anyway.
That's something we can, yeah, certainly explore.
It would make sense.
I would assume, though, there's going to be some municipal costs in there. I mean, I don't think they're gonna do it for free.
They're not gonna do it for free, but they can do it cheaper than what we can do it with.
I certainly hope this is right there. We did just make it public that we're spending eighteen thousand per mile on that road.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's a negotiation.
They're gonna come in at seventeen thousand for a maintenance agreement, right?
I I really believe that if you talk to Langola Township and says, hey, would you guys, would you have this included in your plow? I'm almost sure they'd do it.
Sure.
Because they're right there and they got to go down that road to get to where they got to go.
Some of these things are like overhead. We do have some codes, time codes, like general overhead that kind of spreads costs to all the Cassau miles. So that could be part of it too. But, yeah, as far as plowing, certainly if somebody's right there, they could do it more efficiently than than us driving all the way from Foley to do that. So good point. But we do the same, I just want to point out too, that we we do the same thing for the Cassau regular as we do for the the municipal miles, so you could see what we're spending in the municipalities, which are on these these pages here, since we have less miles of that. But generally, municipal miles tend to be more expensive. So we're spending nine thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars per mile. And that's because there's things like curb and gutter. It seems like inevitably every year on some of our Cassau routes, a catch basin has deteriorated and it's sinking and causes an issue. So we have to hire our contractor to come in and regrout the the manhole and catch basin to bring that up. And those are like usually a lot of costs for the number of miles that that are. Just because, yeah, municipal roads usually have more features in them that just that just cost more, so. But moving on, we do the same thing for all of our our county roads on the subsequent pages, starting on page sixteen. And there's a lot more individually numbered miles roads because we go from forty to ninety-one of county roads. So if I get to page sixteen point one, I believe, yeah, sixteen point one, will show us our total per mile of county road. And that comes to three thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-four cents. So as an average over total mileage, we do spend a little bit less per mile on county roads than we do for Cassau. And some of the reasons you may wonder why is that? One thing that sticks out to me is, well, all of our Cassau roads are paved roads. So when it comes to winter maintenance, snow plowing, every Cassau road gets plowed every snow event. Therefore, it gets salt and sand put on it every snow event. About half of our county roads are still gravelled. They don't get plowed every snow event. Now, if it's a significant snow event, and we usually use about four inches, if we get four inches at a time or more, we'll go out and try to grab those gravels. But if it's less than that, that gravel road may not get plowed that snow event. And gravel roads don't get the salt and sand put on them either. So that's that's a big thing why the difference of county roads are, appear to be cheaper to maintain per mile than than Cassau roads.
So, Chris, when we have a lot of our county roads now that are gravel leading to asphalt, you know, we we asphalt them back three, four, five hundred feet. Does that sand and gravel you put on there go towards the towards the asphalt road or the Cassau road? Or does it go to the?
The way we've been doing it now, I think, is the the batuminous roadway. So if it's just a budding a Cassau road and, yeah, as a Cassau project, we'll pave that back, we'll we'll count that towards a Cassau road.
Okay.
I think it's, you could do it either way, but it makes sense to me that, oh, you're intersecting a paved road. That's why that little batuminous section exists. So let's let's credit that to the paved roadway.
Question on the county road eighty, on the thirty-two thousand? Is that a typo or?
Look at the brush and weed.
Brush and weed, yeah, yeah.
I think, well, this year, we did spend a lot of, because we, in twenty-one, I believe it was, maybe it's twenty twenty already, we finalized purchasing the additional road right-of-way width for county road eighty, because that's still part of that future Cassau twenty-nine quarter. So this would be most likely the section from three down to Cassau eight towards Highway twenty-three. So in this year, maintenance did spend a lot of extra time clearing the trees and brush out of that additional width out to sixty feet.
Okay.
So that is, that is another good eye. So that is, those are kind of things that, yeah, we look for anomalies. Why is it more this year than any other roadway? And that's the main reason why that is. We did spend more time and more effort clearing trees and brush out because of that additional right-of-way acquisition, so. Now, since you pointed those things out, Commissioners, I expect next year to go back and look for those same things and see if it's the same number or not, so.
As long as you highlight them, fire.
Yeah.
And then just quickly, I'll go towards, maybe towards the end of the the book. We break out those same lists of construction projects that you saw in the beginning. But we, each project has its own page dedicated to it. So in that particular calendar year, you can see things like how much engineering we spent on that project, how much contractor payments that we paid. And this is where you get to really see what's happening with the construction project from year to year. And you may say, some of these projects, you may say, well, I don't remember you working on that road that year. Well, maybe we had some engineering or we had some overhead costs for finishing up paperwork. Like this one right off the top of the bat is this Mayhew Lake Road corridor study that we did in two thousand and twenty-two. So we had staff time, me going to meetings, looking at documentation and stuff in two thousand and twenty-two. Even though we didn't do a construction project, we had some engineering costs on that. So you could see that for all those projects, and those takes you to the end. Oh, I should mention the very end, though, too. If numbers aren't your thing and you're like, you're like me, you like pictures, so the last two pages are maps. And you could see graphically the maintenance that was completed in two thousand and twenty-two. So just for example, this blue line are the roads that maintenance crack filled. And these little dots represent culverts that were replaced as part of maintenance. Those could be entrance culverts, or they could be centerline culverts under the roadway. And the very last map is the construction projects that were completed. And this, when I say construction projects completed, this means that there was actually physical work on the roadways in this calendar calendar year. So last thing I'll mention is this is something that I would like to get out on our website. So it's out there in public for the public to see. We haven't done that yet, but that's what I hope to do this week still. So that's our annual report for two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, just a quick question. With this being our our largest road project year, how are things going?
Going well. It's been a very busy month in August. We were fortunate, we're down one engineering technician, but we were very fortunate to hire two summer interns that were phenomenal. They were a lot of help. They added a lot of value to the work that we needed. They really helped us get through. The downside with interns is by the middle of August, they're usually going back to school and the places that they come from. So the last two weeks in August were been extremely busy. Even myself and my assistant, Mark, we were out on the road last week, staking some things out, marking some things out for the permanent strippers, which are coming in. Well, they're here today, start striping some of the the roads they hadn't got to yet, so.
I think I saw you out on Mayhew Lake Road, just south of County Four.
Probably, yeah, we were marking out the turnrings there.
With your four ways on.
What's that?
Parked in the middle of the road with the four ways on.
Oh, sure, yeah. Well, good, I'm glad you saw.
I was gonna lay on the horn when I went by it, but I thought it was.
What we were doing at that time was marking out the no passing zones. And so the way you do that is no passing zones are based on a driver with a height of eye at three and hundred, three and a half feet above the roadway, trying to see another object that's at least three and a half feet above the roadway for that speed eleven hundred feet apart. So Mark Ludo and I were in two different vehicles and we had, we used temporary pavement marking tape on the back of a pickup as our target. So we we measure out eleven hundred, eleven hundred feet and we drive along the roadway. And when we start to disappear, that's when we mark on the road when you need to stripe for a no passing zone and start. And then whether it's a curve or a hill, when it starts to come back into view, that's when you know the no passing zone can end. So those are the things that we were doing. And unfortunately, you have to be in the roadway because that's where the driver is, where the driver's eye is going to be as they're traveling down the roadway fifty-five miles an hour, so.
Just a comment that for the cost we pay for striping, you'd think that'd come with the striping cost.
You would, yeah.
Holy crap, what do they do? Just sit in the truck and?
Market?
Markets, about it, right?
Kind of. They, we do have them painting stop ahead markings, stop bars and turn arrows in the lane, so they they do get out of it. But maybe it's one of those things too, as an engineer, we want to make sure that they put it in the right location too.
I mean, I agree with that part, but, you know, I thought they did all that for the cost we pay them.
Yeah.
When you buy out the competition, you can start setting your price, which would happen to us, so.
Any other questions for Chris? Thank you, Chris.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks. All right, we're going to move into our human services board. I'll turn over to Commissioner Hyden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, we'll call the human services board to order. Approve or amend the agenda. Bob, got anything to add?
No changes.
I'll obtain a motion, please.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda item one, two, and three, what would we like to do with them?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion on those three items? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Bob, you got anything else? Bob, you got anything else for us tonight, today?
Wow.
Wow, okay.
How about Sandy, Mister Chair?
Sandy, you got anything for us?
I do not.
Okay, great, well, thank you, everyone. At this time, we'll adjourn the Human Services Board and turn it back over to the the Chair, Board Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hyden. We convene a regular board meeting and move into Commissioner Meeting Updates, anyone that would like to start? Okay, Commissioner Kepinski?
Mine's been pretty easy, there was not a lot going on in the last week, so.
All right.
Yeah.
Other than, other than the uh the um interviews.
Yep, with all the cows and then we had to score a grant meeting, that was it, that's all I had.
All right, Commissioner Pop?
Well, we had Tri-County Solid Waste two times, we got quite a bit of stuff out there. We're still working on the agreement of uh um whether the Pope Douglas could see extra two percent. We discussed it at our regular meeting on the twenty fourth, and then we had a joint meeting in Sock Center with them. I thought it went well, I I don't, I don't know where we're going down the road with that. It seems a little contentious on what what uh needs to be done or what should be done, I don't know, you gotta go get the options, but. Both of them were several long meetings. And then I had uh the BEP um board meeting that was pretty good. We, you know, a lot of that stuff has been confidential. We discussed a little bit of the budget and uh some of the stuff. I was really surprised when you look back at the number of members that we had and we picked up a lot of them with the CARES funding. We've only lost four members out of that whole group. Now, we've picked up a couple in the last month, which I think is pretty amazing considering we knew a lot of these only joined because they were getting money. And, you know, do they, they must see the benefits of 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 continuing their membership.
So they're fairly current with their membership then?
Yeah, we're we're really current, I mean, we had the the one up in Rice that wasn't joining and he actually paid for a year he didn't didn't pay for, he paid for two years at one time, the one he didn't pay for and the current one. So, you know, they see the benefits of it, that Amanda's out there working, they're doing business retentions. I think that's a big part of of uh why they're keeping the members when they they show up at the business. What what can we do for you, what are your needs? I know they got a couple that, you know, it's minor things like, uh, you know, they're gonna put in new lighting so they can get, she works with electrical company and get some all kinds of, you know, what we've seen is some grants for electrical. Little things like that is like, okay, we can we can pay a membership for the next five years because we got this much money. So I I think that that's running close. And that was about all that I had. I did have an, I did have an extension meeting at the U of M um down the cities on uh Thursday. It seems to me like extension, the numbers are really great, the number of youth that they're serving is really great. You don't ever wanna knock that because if you can keep youth involved in something like that, you'll keep them out of the bad stuff that's happening all over. But we are, we have moved a lot to the, to the, how should I say that? They they don't wanna say, to the First Nation people, like in the Red Lake Indian Reservation. The number of of fouragers and members that they got participating up there is just growing immensely, but um we're not, we're not able to call them reservations no more, they gotta be called First Nations now.
So they got something politically correct for that now?
Yeah, we got political correct on that. I think they had roughly, I think they said they had about eight thousand fouragers that exhibited across at the state fair. And Benton County was one of the um, one of the larger ones for number seals. And Benton County did win the overall herdsmanship in the dairy barn at the state fair this year.
Wow.
Awesome.
And that's, you know, I don't know if it's changed from the times we've been in fourager, our our kids were, but that was like a prestigious award because you get to be at the beginning of the barn and you get all the Bennys that go with it, so.
As long as you're on that, I talked to, uh, texted a little bit with Ann Olson and she's gonna be bringing some of those fouragers in, she was gonna try to do that today, but timing wise and school starting, so we pushed it off beyond the nineteenth.
Okay.
So hopefully we'll see some of those.
She did that last year, right?
See some of those members here at our next meeting. All right, Commissioner Schlangen?
See, R S V P, R S V P had their um volunteer appreciation for the year, so I helped out with about four sites for that and got to bring a couple of grandkids along at a couple of them, so that was fun. I was on the Emergency Operations Center with Monty.
Oh, I checked you online, P C one oh one?
Yeah. And there was one on homeless too, I think. The home homeless update on the twenty ninth. And that was about it.
All right, Commissioner Hyden?
No, I've already said.
All right, you're done, all right. That's right, you agreed with Commissioner Kepinski, sorry about that. I had Highway twenty three Coalition uh last week, uh good update, we did lose a member that actually resigned. He's taking on a lot of extra responsibilities in the business end of it, uh from Runnings, Ryan Aaron's. He was on for a little over a year, I believe, so he submitted his resignation, so we're gonna be looking at filling that. Uh, again, Tri-County Solid Waste, we did have the two meetings. I I think the position that we're in is, you know, following the contract at the two percent, the additional two percent. Also, for the Tri-County Solid Waste Board to be looking what their options are going forward. You know, I like to call it our Plan B, we need to have a Plan B, and we don't know what that Plan B is yet. So I think we need to dig down and figure out a potential Plan B. So, but I would agree with Commissioner Pop, it has some contentions to it and hopefully we're gonna be able to work through some of those items. It gets to be long meetings when we go in circles and argue about the same things. Uh, anyways, uh Soil and Water Conservation District, at their monthly meeting last week, just reviewed some of the One Water One Plan items for the Mississippi and also they did have a tech that's going part time because of a family uh situation, emergency with a with an injury that happened to a family member. So it was, it was good to hear how they worked through some of that, Jerry worked through with one of their staff and be able to to make that that work, to keep that person on. Um, that's all I had, anything else?
Mister Chair, I I do believe we all kind of forgot the budget meetings.
Budget meetings, yeah, I did have that on here, but I did really didn't wanna mention it.
I wasn't gonna bring that.
Does that mean they're forgettable?
They are, no.
They can be forgettable, yeah.
But that was a couple of long days.
Anything else, Commissioner Meeting Updates? All right, any comments by Commissioners? All right, Set Committee the Holes.
Uh, Mister Chair, uh you are invited to the Care Touching Tables for Seniors Event and Luncheon, Thursday, October twenty sixth at noon. It's Thursday, October twenty sixth at noon, New Life Church in Foley. They are asking for R S V Ps, perhaps could we get a show of hands of who is interested in attending?
I'll be hosting that table this year, and so, yeah, if you could confirm, that'd be great.
One thing, I don't know, we got, I got BEP Board Meeting in the morning, we got Tri-County Solid Waste at ten o'clock.
Right, we moved that to ten to be, or to nine. To nine, so that we could get back for that touching tables.
Okay.
Like an important event for us to be at if at all possible. Okay?
So register, register.
I'm not positive yet.
Okay, so four of us for sure?
Who, I'm sorry, who's that, who's nine?
Us four, Commissioner Schlangen's in question yet.
Okay, gotcha.
And you're going to.
If something changes, just please let us know.
And I'll have the table, yeah.
Yep, okay. Uh, today we add, I'll be adding to the calendar before, but we wanna make sure we add it formally, your site visit, your site visit to the pub, the Morrison County Public Works Facility to visit with Volksham Contiguity. We'll be visiting with uh Pete, uh Philippi and Caleb, the the Site Superintendent, that's approximately noon today. The address is twelve oh eight West River Fall, River Road in Little Falls. And um if anyone needs that map, let me know um to find, to find, so. I think I emailed it out, it's got the map and the address. Lastly, registration has opened for the AMC Annual Conference, December fourth, fifth, and sixth. The Hyatt Regency in Minneapolis. Uh, registration and lodging are now open. Uh, shall we register and make lodging arrangements for all five board members? Is that a fair assumption?
Mister Chair?
You can make my reservation, but I believe that AMC is gonna make it for me and maybe, and maybe the county gets off the hook. Okay, so Beth will, Beth will inquire with AMC to see if that's covered for yourself, if it isn't, if it isn't, then we'll make it for you. Sounds good.
And Beth, I know we always talk about this, but a follow-up email about when we would need to cancel by?
Oh, and um for next week's conference? I know I have Steve's, did anybody else need to make any changes? Cause I think that's due like tomorrow or?
I have a note on my calendar, I don't know that, answer that yet, but I have the note to make sure to let you know.
Okay.
You know, one detail, I I know in the past, Mister Chair, is the sessions usually begin very early, Monday morning, this would be the fourth. In the past, I know some folks have gone down the Sunday before. So let me ask you all, is anyone interested in going down the Sunday before? I'm hearing most hands going, yes.
I got State Board Meeting at two o'clock.
Cause they have pre-conference events on Sunday anyway. So a note to Beth is that we'll want, make reservations for folks then, that Sunday night, beginning Sunday night, December the third, and then the night of the fourth and the fifth, and the conference concludes, they're usually around noon on the sixth. Okay. That's all we have?
All right.
Move for, to Set the Cows, Mister Chair?
Second.
Motion and a second to Set the Cows as presented, all is in favor?
Aye.
It's carried.